Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of June 16th. City Council will meet for a regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in Council Chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. It's time to dive in for movie night. Join Lee Summit Parks and Recreation at Summit Waves on Monday, June 30th at 8:30 PM for a fun evening watching Inside Out. Grab your popcorn and we'll see everyone there. Visit ls parks.net for more information. Sunshine is in the forecast for Lee Summit this weekend. Let the LS Tourism website be your guide to summer fun with upcoming events, itineraries, and over 180 restaurants to choose from. Embrace your inner tourist. Visit ls tourism.com. And mark your calendars for Legacy Blast on July 3rd from 6:00 to 9:30 PM at Legacy Park. Gates open at 6:00 PM and the fireworks show begins at 9:30 PM. Tune in to 94.9 KCMO during the show for music choreographed to the fireworks. Concessions, food trucks, and more will be at the sports venue surrounding Legacy Park before the show. Be sure to arrive early to join in on the fun. Learn more at ls parks.net. And a reminder, city facilities will be closed on Thursday, June 19th for Juneteenth. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens and our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene. Licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them and say, 982, then route.
Officers in route, 914.
So typically I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, how can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago. My personal journey with mental health and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, and getting to know her story and getting to know who comes around and sees you. Well, then we found a support person and they responded immediately and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
Smith Hat Company is coming to downtown Lee Summit. Purchase a variety of hats, including cowboy or cowgirl hats. Or unleash your creativity and design a one-of-a-kind custom hat, choosing from premium materials, unique embellishments, and expert craftsmanship. Smith Hat Company is hanging its hat here in spring 2025. Summit Play Village is coming to South Lee Summit near Rain Tree. The indoor children's playground will be for children eight and under to promote creativity, explore family-friendly activities, and have fun. Summit Play Village is set to open in April 2025. Street food sensation turned fast casual hit Dave's Hot Chicken is bringing the heat to Lee Summit. Specializing in Nashville-style hot chicken and serving tenders and sliders, Dave's Hot Chicken will be arriving to Summit Woods in summer 2025. Lee Summit is getting three ice cream shops across the city. Howdy Homemade Ice Cream will be scooping its way into the Chapel Ridge Shopping Center. Howdy Homemade creates a place where everyone belongs. A shop dedicated to creating jobs for people with disabilities. The amazing ice cream served by amazing people will be coming in summer 2025. Brewster's Ice Cream will serve Summit Woods Crossing with over 24 fresh rotating flavors made daily. The shop offers 150 homemade ice cream flavors, including sherbets and sorbets, as well as ice cream cakes and pies. Brewster's Ice Cream is coming in summer 2025. Summit Woods Crossing is also getting a Cold Stone Creamery. The ice cream parlor serves fresh, made-to-order, customizable ice cream mixed on a frozen granite stone. Cold Stone Creamery is coming in summer 2025.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. I love where you guys are coming from. You're local and you're all kind of coming together. But where I'm struggling with from the last time that we talked about this, I think it was maybe October.
I actually grew up in my district. We moved here my sophomore year in high school. My parents still live in the same house and I just went through high school here and then have stayed in Lee Summit ever since. The neighborhood that my parents live in is Canterbury. My favorite thing, and I still do to this day, is I love to go running. They have the best sidewalks. I feel you can go for days. So now I still get to do that since I live not too far from them. I get to use those same routes that I took during high school and it's just fun. We're a big soccer family. I love sports. I love to watch sports and it's even more fun to watch sports when my kids are in it. I coached my little daughter Josie's team I have since kindergarten. We do the basketball. We do softball. We're gonna do volleyball. It's just so much fun. Something that I would like to accomplish while on city council is to get more family activities here. You know, I don't want to have to be driving my family to, say, the Kansas side or any other city but my own. And I want to be able to invest in our city and make family memories in our city.
Open the public hearing on the matter of K1 speed, dive ventures, crack shack, blue jeans golf.
I just want to say thank you for bringing us to Lee Summit. I grew up at this. My parents called me to stay, so I'm excited that now I can take my kids there.
Bill number 23-0, pre-construction services for the downtown Market Plaza project.
I'm just as excited as everybody else about the downtown marketplace. I'm extremely excited about the community that it's going to bring. Bringing more family things to do to the city and right in the heart of it.
When you presented the numbers, the first time you came to us, it was 25.5% and then a lot of...
You know, people were like, oh, you know, being on council, it's not a lot of work, not a lot of... I think it was a bit of a surprise when there's so much info that you really should just don't know. Even something as simple as sidewalks. It's like you don't realize how much goes into something like that. After a couple of months, I'm like, okay, finally, you know, catching the groove of how things work, learning new things, but also feel like I've got some things under my belt as well. It's been a great experience so far.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and blessings it holds. Guide our hearts with kindness, our words with wisdom, and our steps with purpose. May we honor you in all we do. Amen.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session number 41. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Raeder.
Present.
Councilmember Pryor. Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Present.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Present.
Mayor Protim Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here. Okay, thank you. The first item or first agenda item is to be, is to approve of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Agenda is adopted. I will note that there's a microphone up here. If, uh, an extra microphone from the television station, they had to put it up here by ours. So if you go up there to speak, staff or citizens, that would be what that extra microphone is. They need to get the audio from there. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda from Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Mayor Protim Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes 8-0. Thank you. Next will be Council Roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in your community, in the community or your district, maybe. Yes, Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity today to attend the Not-for-Profit Spotlight put on by Link to Lee Summit and Nick Parker. And it was a little presentation from Meals on Wheels. And I know Councilmember Hodges, Councilmember Pryor have delivered meals for them. And it was just kind of nice to understand their, their whole job and what they do. And they feed over 700 people a week here in Lee Summit.
Wow. Thank you. Okay. Not seeing any other Councilmore Roundtable, so we'll go into public hearings. We're gonna move this one. I need a motion to continue this public hearing to a date certain. Yes, I do. I'm gonna close the regular session and open the public hearing on the matter of Agenda Item 4A, Residential Preliminary Development Plan 150 in Ward Apartments through 620 Southwest Ward Road. Mill House Development is the applicant. We're not gonna swear anyone in because I need a motion to continue this to July 8th. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to continue public hearing for application PL 2024-319 to a date certain of July 8th, 2025.
Thank you. We have a motion to continue to July 8th. I have a second by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Thank you. And then we will dive right into public comments. We have numerous public commenters tonight. Who'd like to go first? Do you have an order you prefer? Yeah. Mr. Carroll, is that right? No? Mr. Bobbitt? Either one.
Mayor, City Council, and Lee Summit staff. My name is Bill Bobbitt. I live with my wife Martha at 207 Northeast Douglas. The big blue house on the bend, as many describe it. When we moved back to Lee Summit, after 11 years in Dallas, Texas, we intentionally sought a home in the downtown area. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the Northeast Douglas Street Improvement Project. Like many residents living on Northeast Douglas, I'm concerned with how this project will impact our historic neighborhood. In January of 2024, we received a letter about the project. And I took the time and attended the presentation, open house. I was impressed with the professional presentation, the poster boards that were displayed at the event. I also signed up on the contact sheet with name, address, phone, and email, with the understanding that the city would keep me updated as the plan progressed, as well as city officials and staff would notify me of subsequent meetings. Never received another letter, phone call, or email to date. I was very surprised when I received the registered letter from the city a little over 30 days ago with a 60-day notice. A gift of an extra 30 days per city employee, since only 30 days is required by city ordinance. And the ultimate threat of condemnation. We have received a second letter with 30-day notice yesterday. I respectfully ask the mayor and city council to intervene and to help the Douglas Street residents facilitate a meeting with city staff and officials to hear our concerns and help to amend this plan to something that is agreeable to both the homeowners affected as well as preserve the historic character of our neighborhood. I fully understand the need for improvements, but the 10-foot-wide multi-use path seems excessive for an area that has homes that are 100-plus years old. The original plat, I'm sure, was designed without thinking of this multi-use path. Trying to implement this path distracts from the historic charm. It also triples the area that, as a conscientious citizen, I will need to clean and take care of. I realize that there is no city ordinance here in Lee Summit that requires me to shovel this multi-use path. But state law says I could be held liable for injury for injury on it if neglected and left in an unsafe condition. It is my understanding this could include snow and ice and if not attended to, could result in being sued by individuals that may slip and fall. Additionally, it is my understanding that we, as the homeowner, would be responsible for repairs and replacement as needed. In closing, I ask again my elected city officials to grant due process, allow our concerns to be heard, resolved. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Mayor. I'd point out our timer's not working. We've got a little obstruction there. So I'll keep the timer, the three-minute timer on my phone for you. Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mike Carroll. I was here last week and here I am again. I wanted to read a rather heartfelt email from one of our fellow residents at 501 Douglas, Jolene Twyford. So it goes on here. "Talby and I have lived in our home at 501 Northeast Douglas Street for 46 years when we got married. We are enjoying our home and have never wanted to move because we love our community and neighborhood with the beautiful trees and parks. Douglas Street is a main street into the heart of our city with all the lovely trees and neighbors who care about their homes. We have raised our two daughters as a..." We have raised our two daughters as well as fostered four children in our lovely home. Douglas Street has an ambiance about it that would be destroyed if all the majestic trees along the road would be cut down to put in a 10-foot oversized sidewalk. The sidewalk now in front of our home provides ample foot traffic for walkers. I walk two miles a day on it now, and there is no problem with people I pass by as we walk and talk. Talby and I do not want a 10-foot oversized sidewalk in front of our home. It will take up too much of our small front yard. Most people on Douglas Street will lose their front yard to this monster concrete sidewalk. People walking by our house on a 10-foot sidewalk will be able to take our Amazon packages too easily. Our hedges will be uprooted, too, that have been there for 50 years. How would you like half of your front yard gone and people looking into your windows by just walking by on a 10-foot oversized concrete sidewalk? We would like to have a decent front yard with a reasonable-sized sidewalk. Maybe a four- or five-foot sidewalk would be available for the Public Works Department to consider. Would you please direct our Public Works Department to pause the project and meet and work with us property owners to develop a mutually agreeable project design modification to save our majestic trees and a reasonable sidewalk? Even the sidewalk by the Lee McKeegan Park South does not have a 10-foot sidewalk on Douglas Street, which has plenty of grounds, so why put one in front of our house that takes up my front yard? Our Douglas Street trees bring a natural beauty to our homes and the corridor. Some trees need to be cut down, but too many trees will be destroyed with a 10-foot-sized oversized concrete sidewalk, which us property owners are against. And in 1979, when Talby and I bought and lived in our home, we have seen lots of development on Douglas Street, especially from Chipmunt Road to Colvin Road. The road was in the middle of cornfields, both sides now full of businesses, a high school, a police station, and a hospital. Our neighborhood is lovely and homey with tall trees and unique different homes where we take pride in our homes and yard. Well, most of us. We do not feel a 10-foot oversized concrete sidewalk would complement our front yards. Most neighbors have cultivated their front yards with lovely trees and flowers and plants as well as their driveways. Please have the Public Works Department work with us to consider putting in a four- or five-foot sidewalk to enhance our lovely neighborhood. The Douglas Street neighbors would so appreciate your help and our request to save some of our majestic trees and a smaller sidewalk, other than the oversized 10-foot concrete sidewalk being pushed by Public Works Department." So an update, we, we currently have this petition, and 40% of the Douglas Street residents have signed it. They want a design modification meeting, please, especially for the 10-foot shared path that we need to modify that. Mia Pryor is trying to arrange a meeting with Ryan Elam and Michael Park, but I haven't heard anything recently. But we just, just know we are standing by as we wait for the meeting and hope that you will help us get that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Matthews. My husband, Mike, and I live at 1 Northeast Douglas. We would like to ask the same as the other two speakers, because first, this is a National Register Historic District on Northeast Douglas, and as such, the landscape is part of that district, especially the mature trees, because it's not just the built environment, it's the natural environment. And I have some quotes that I'd like to submit with that, with this verbal thing. The second thing is the three-quarter mile stretch of Northeast Douglas between Chipmunt and Second Street is slated, as you know, to lose almost 50 mature trees, but 40 of those 50 are slated to be out on the wide path side. So it's the path itself, and the lifespan of those trees is several hundred years. So it's part of the historic district, and the path itself is part of this problem. We understand about this area being part of a Greenway Trails Plan or a tentative part, but what we understand about Greenway Trails, and I have some pictures and I've looked and the map of the, of the trails. We believe that there'll be lots of different ways to do that and that this area is a narrow historic part and not consistent with what a Greenway Trail is. And if this goes through, there will be no other Northeast Douglas Natural Historic District, National Historic District. There will be plenty of opportunities to do trails. Thank you. Should I give you, leave these here?
Sure.
This one piece of paper cites where these, what I'm saying comes from, the Northeast Douglas Street Register Historic District PDF, the Lee Summit Municipal Code, and the Lee Summit Historic Preservation Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Rick Chapman. I live at 401 Northeast Douglas, and I just wanted to show my support for the people that are here, that consideration to maybe give some more input for the people that are going to be affected by this would be greatly appreciated. I've been in Lee's Summit since 2007 and bought our house on Douglas Street in 2000, and clearly it's a thing of beauty to drive along Douglas Street with the trees, the historical aspect of it, and I really just think it'd be not good for all of the community to, to put that path in. I'd rather see the path smaller, nicer, that people can take their strollers along there with their babies instead of having to get out in the street. And also, I'd like to see the, the speed limit lowered on Douglas. People just fly up and down there, and I think if you're going to do anything, lower the speed limit, not make it quite as big, and support the people that live on the street. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Steph Hedencamp. I am here to support the property owners of Douglas Street, both on the northeast side and the southeast side, because we know a similar project is about to take place on the southeast portion of Douglas. There's a campaign that's beginning, Save the Trees on Douglas Street. We're going to have yard signs up and down the street. We're going to let people know that they can get involved and support this effort. We really want to make clear that all we really want to do is sit down with Public Works and do something a little more reasonable. When it comes to what the previous gentleman said about the speed limit, part of this design modification is to actually remove the curve, straighten the road there on Northeast Douglas Street. And we all know, when you want to increase speeds, you straighten the road. So right now, we really don't want you to remove that curve. We want to keep the speed slow. So this is just another really important reason why we need to sit down with Public Works at our earliest convenience. We're not really sure what the process is to make that happen, since it seems like we've already gotten to the point of certified letters being sent, but we really want that meeting. So thank you so much for your help to facilitate that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Andrew Kuhar, and I live at 212 Northeast Douglas. I just got this packet on Saturday, so I'm not really familiar with the ins and outs and the exact details of the, all this process, but my dad graduated in '56 out here. I live in that house and own it. It's, I'll be there until I'm dead, you know, and it, every, I do everything to make it look nice for the people that come through our town. I think that in any project, we need to, you know, just kind of review all of our options and do a lot of brainstorming, and everybody's voice counts. You know, there's, you know, we're not going to make everybody happy all the time, but you know, at least we get a chance to say something. It is a beautiful street, you know. It is a beautiful town, and the hugest point that we all need to remember, it is historical, you know what I'm saying? I live on that block, and I pay tremendous amount of property tax just because of it. If my house was a block over, I'm sure I would have a lot less. So we just all need to just get along, you know, and, and, and we all woke up alive and seeing get around today, you know, and we're blessed, you know, and I'm grateful for that. And I'm going to be supporting all these people here, too, and be informed as well so that we can make the best decision for everybody. So having said that, thank you guys for your time, and I'll probably be back again. This isn't, this is just the beginning of it, and it's going to be long and arduous and, you know, and can't make everybody happy, but we're sure going to try, all right? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, hi. My name's Matt Glickberg. I live at 601 Northeast Douglas, a two-story white house with a wraparound porch on the corner of Maggie and Douglas. We've been involved with this process for over two years, been to every meeting, put in comments at every meeting, got our package, had some discrepancies, called the city, jumped right on it, took care of everything. We have no problem with this design and everything. We need to get rid of the flooding on Douglas, and this'll do it. So I just want to say that I approve of everything we're doing. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right. Thank you. I'll just make, I'll try to make a couple of comments. It's really challenging because let me just start by saying I love Douglas Street. I've walked it. You know, I've been here a long time, and I used to live near there, so I would say I've walked it, you know, hundreds upon hundreds of times, because I'm a walker and was a jogger when I was younger. And it is a thing of beauty, that street. It does have the ambiance with the trees. I really appreciate the way the owners take care of the, the yards and their homes. I could even say there's not a street in Lee's Summit that I wouldn't be prouder to live on. The, the thing is, this, this, just for the record, this has, was voter-approved in 2017. The citizens have been waiting for this for a long time, and this has been in the works for a long time. This is a, not just a city-funded, but a federally funded street. So we're, it's an $11 million improvement from Second Street all the way to Chipmunt on Douglas. And it's that expensive because it's going to address the stormwater. It's going to address water, water lines as well as curbs and gutters and, you know, the, the street. It's not going to be a wider road. We're going to keep it narrow. It's, it's been in a public engagement process for quite some time. MoDOT's been involved, approving of the process. So it comes down to, we can, we can get you a meeting, but there's been meetings. There are a lot of trees that are being taken down, and there's going to be a lot of trees planted, a lot more than are being taken down. We've done this before on Third Street from 50 Highway over to, how far west?
Far.
Pryor. We did a really astounding job, and it was not an easy one because of the same reasons there are a lot of homes affected. I would also say we've done it on numerous other locations. Orchard was a big one, long before I was ever up, up here, and we did it right, and it was a huge improvement. So we're trying to improve this road. We're trying to keep it narrow. We're trying to keep as much charm as possible and, and build upon that which you have, but we, we do have to address all these issues. So I think when, when we come in and we're talking about beautiful trees, there's a lot of trees that, that are asked, people are asking for the city to remove that aren't being removed, aren't going to get, be removed. There's trees that are being asked to not remove that really need to be removed for more than one reason, as far as the damage that it, that it's causing or the, the potential risks that would cause with regard to the, the utilities and such. So Mr. Dunning, again, we're pretty far along in this process. This has been a long public engagement process. I do understand many of the, the citizens here tonight have been to these meetings, and I appreciate the email that we received explaining just how detailed this process is to the council, but we might have to have another meeting where all this is addressed again, because some people are just now coming into an understanding of, of what's gone on. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, Mayor, and a thought that I have, too, is, you know, providing what we call a section view of the improvements to understand is we, we see things on the surface of, of, you know, the yards and the trails and things, but what is, lies underneath that is not well-understood and the impacts that a project like that has on, I'll say, root systems of trees and, and where they're located and things like that. So maybe we could put together a visual, too, just to help understand what we're looking at underground and how this works.
A visual would be great. It's just hard for us because I don't think there's a person on this dais that hasn't been a massive supporter of anything related to our downtown, and this is a part of our downtown, so we want to do what's best. So as much, as much information as you can get out there to us and to the citizens and maybe, maybe a sit-down so they can air their, air their grievances again to see if there's, you know, misunderstandings or, you know, if there's solutions that, that haven't been put before us in the last couple of years as this has gone on, maybe they'll be brought forth at this time. All right, thank you. All right. Let's go to presentations. This is kind of a long-awaited conversation that we've been wanting to have about housing. I know that staff's been working on this one for quite some time. It's one of our big rocks, is what we call it, where we're wanting to make, move the needle on how we address housing in our community. So, Ms. Nassif?
Good evening. Amy Nassif, interim Director of Development. There we go. I was going to say, it was going to be a short presentation if I couldn't get that up. So yes, as you mentioned, Mayor, here tonight to talk about housing, it's one of the big rocks. It's, dare I say, your favorite rock, something we've been talking about and very passionate about for a long time. So tonight, just to introduce, as we did previously, just some, give you an overview and updates on where we are with the other rocks that we've been working on, those big project items. Public Works continues to work very hard diligently with the stormwater, big rocks and directions that you all had, also solid waste, and been some updates provided to you all. Beautification, Public Works and Development Services working on both those items, as you can see here on the screen. And also, just want to update with the architecture piece, we are shooting for a public hearing with the Planning Commission on July 10th. So that would be coming to you all in August, so that would be great as well. And then tonight, talking about housing. So where we start with everything is the council retreat that we had, and this is directly out of your summary report for what your thoughts were and your collective direction was at that time on the various items related to housing. And so tonight, we want to break this out into just six steps, because housing is such a big, vast, important topic, and there's so much that we could cover and so much ground to cover. So what we want to first talk about to answer some questions that you had from the retreat and some other meetings we had with you all is talk about just some housing terms and some definitions to make sure we're all on the same page when we're talking about various to make sure we're all on the same page when we're talking about various items. Provide you with some benchmarks, inventory and some data, both locally and nationally. Um, our meeting history, we've only had a couple of meetings and so just wanna go over those and share with everyone. Um, also, very proud of the work we've accomplished with your support on some of those housing goals already for the past couple of years. And also then discuss and share with you those recent requests, what you've, um, what we've heard from you all that you'd like us to work on and we wanna talk about those and where we move and how we move forward. So, some housing terms and some definitions. Um, and I won't read these verbatim, but if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any time. But affordable, affordable housing, you know, that's gonna be talking about housing that costs no more than 30% of a household's gross income. When we talk about attainable housing, that's a little bit different and that's when we talk about market-rate housing that's gonna meet the needs of our population and our residents that make those incomes between 80 and 120% of our median income. So, you are considered cost burden then if your housing costs are more than 30% of your gross income. And housing cost does include not just your mortgage or your rent, but also your housing bills. Um, workforce housing, that's gonna be housing that specifically targets, um, our workforce and middle-income households. And then, missing middle, which fills that, that traditional gap with your large lot, single-family. And these are not, you know, definitions or things that, that we make up. These are industry terms, um, that we use, that everyone uses. So, single-family duplex and multifamily. So, when we talk about single-family, it's just that. It's gonna be a dwelling that's situated on one lot designed to be occupied by one family. A duplex is situated on one lot designed to be occupied by two families. And then, when we talk about multifamily, um, per our UDO, what we're meaning there is multifamily is gonna be for five families or more. So, it could be a, a large-scale apartment complex, could be multiple stories in size, but it's gonna be five families or more. And then, it's also important just to make sure that we're all on the same page too with what our processes are. And I know you've all seen this recently from me, especially also at CEDC. But preliminary development plan is that first step in the process. It's preliminary. We say it's conceptual site plan, although quite frankly, it doesn't always look conceptual. It looks pretty detailed, uh, very often, which is great. Um, but that's gonna be what comes in during zoning and that you get with those public hearings. Then, after that is a file development plan and those are gonna be fully engineered drawings and they provide the finer level of details with the development plan. And a lot of that's gonna include items such as the detailed landscaping, lighting, tree preservation, stormwater, other improvements in infrastructure. A plat, very important, but not as much fun and not as interesting as a preliminary plan, 'cause when you plat land, all you're doing is establishing a legal lot of record. So, it's not gonna have all the fun stuff with it. It's just establishing your rights of way, your boundaries, your easements and your tracts. Um, but that is what is required before you can then get your building permit issued. And when we use the term zoning entitlement or zoning approval, you're entitled to certain land uses. You have your zoning in place, which is the first step to knowing and legally being able to be recognized for what land uses are allowed on that property. So, that's why zoning always comes first in your process steps. There will be a quiz later on all that. Just kidding. So, then let's get into some fun, fun stuff too. We're gonna talk about and share with you some housing benchmarks, some inventory and some data. Um, we broke this up into several areas for you all just to try to keep this not to a three-hour meeting, 'cause there's so much data we could provide. So, um, first out of our comprehensive plan, our Ignite Plan, one thing that we track and it's very important when you're talking about housing is population. Right now, our population's just over 107,000 folks, which is great. And we are on track with what our projections were showing in our comprehensive plan. So, what does that mean currently right now with households and such? So, we have about 39,500 households. Our average household size is 2.58. At one time, it was 2.61. Um, and our median household income is just under 105,000. And when you're looking at population also, we always like to look at our demographics and our stages of life 'cause that does dictate your housing types and the housing that you're looking for. The type of housing you might've wanted when you were 18 is not gonna be the same as you want when you're in your 30s and 40s possibly. So, it's really important to get a grasp on that too. And we do have very interesting mix, but, um, also, one of our larger areas is that ages 55-plus. Um, and so, that does indicate to us certain types of needs for housing. And so, it's great. We have about 28% of folks under 20 years old and then also a really large area, 55-plus. And so, that is why and how that housing diversity and having the housing choice and options is so important um, in our community. So, about 74% of our homes are owner-occupied. The rest are rented. Um, our median new construction sale price is about 593,000. And this is for mostly for single-family. Um, and that is new construction, so it's not what's existing on the market or, you know, what's in the older hold, older housing stock, excuse me. And so, with that, we have about 17.5% of our total homeowners are cost burden and that's for homeowners, not renters. That's a different number and slide we'll talk about. And our median house valuation is over 300,000. So, for renters, we have about 26% of our demographics are renters. Um, the median rent is 1,382. And we have a much higher, um, cost burden for our population who rent, which is pretty common and typical for the KC Metro and nationally because the rents are much more, or a higher price point typically. So, we're at 48.5% there. Um, and our vacancy rate for rental units is just under 4%. So, what does that also look like as a breakdown here? So, we, we do love our data and I have to give, um, give props to the folks who helped me put together, um, doing all this. It takes a village. Um, and so, I wanna really thank, um, all the planners, Hector Soto, um, Adair Bright, Claire Byers and Ian Treffren, along with Mike Weisenborn, our project manager, who helped. We track data monthly and try to keep it in real time. And they also helped put this presentation together too and did a fabulous job. Um, so, our housing units by type, we have almost 44,000 house, housing types or housing structures in the city. And our largest, um, type is that single-family residential, what we refer to as residential one. So, that's our larger lot residential category, with the smallest being our horizontal attached, five units more. And actually, too, our triplexes are only about half percent. So, our comprehensive plan, in addition to tracking population, also looks at inventory because of having that, the housing choice and the housing diversity is one of those main goals of both the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan. And so, this is what our breakdown looks like here. Our Ignite recommended mix is in the lower corner for you. Um, and so, but where we're at is that center stage. So, 68% is that residential one category or the larger lot category. And then, as you can see, 10% for our multifamily high-rise. And we say high-rise, we're meaning it's taller than three stories. So, not like 20 stories tall or anything. It's just three stories. And, so what's under construction? There's a lot going on town right now. So, we have, um, over the last several years since around 2021, um, approved a lot of single-family residential lots, as you can see, and also platted quite a few. We have over 600 under construction as we speak and over 440, excuse me, 446 units of multifamily under construction as well. And then, we also provided in the packet for you tonight, a heat map, if you'd like to kinda see where those areas are um, that are most active and the darker the colors or, excuse me, we have the bright red, for instance. That's gonna be where there's more activity is happening for, on the residential side. Am I going too fast or too slow?
You're fine.
Okay. So, um, how do we compare and how do we look for the metro and also nationally? So, median household income, as you can see, is higher than the KC Metro and also the national. Um, median home value is also higher than KC Metro and national, um, along with the median rent. And our vacancy rates are shown here too. And you'll see how low the owner units are and that's something nationally across the board and while there's, so many national studies are showing how we just have such way-too-low of a housing stock. And the higher, the more housing stock you have, the more affordability you have, the better, um, home ownership you have with the upkeep of those units. Um, and so, that's why those vacancy rate numbers are so important. And so, if you also wanna see a table showing, this shows the cost burden. Um, and so, this is for renter is in orange and homeownership is in yellow. So, as you can see across the board, the renters, um, the folks who rent are much more cost burden nationally and locally. And so, we've had a couple of meetings. And so, this does not include, you know, all the other just conversations that we've had. Um, and we've had a lot of meetings at City Council, 'cause, you know, of course, everything that we do with the UDO comes through City Council too. But these are the main meetings that we've had with those topic areas since around 2023, um, that all start with the great work with, um, the CEDC. And so, wanted to show you that and the timeline. And then, also, how that ties. And so, everything we've been doing and showing, sharing at those meetings, how it ties back to our strategic plan, uh, which is our first and foremost plan that we always look to and refer to. One of the main goals out of there being the strong neighborhoods with housing choice to help encourage that affordability and have diversify our housing options. And how the comprehensive plan piggybacks off that and coordinates and collaborates with that and continues that going with the maintaining and thriving quality neighborhoods through that connectivity and having diversity of, of residents and housing choice. And so, whenever, I love this 'cause it's overwhelming, but it really shows how much that we've accomplished in the last two years. So, the column, first column is the accomplishments to date. These are all of our code updates and our policy updates and our procedures, um, that we have updated and our initiatives that we're working on. And then, it shows you, if you go across, what's strategic plan, action item and what comprehensive plan, action item, it then, um, helps us to implement and follows and aligns with. And so, the ones in orange are ones that are ongoing. And so, those are things like, you know, continue community outreach, continue working and implementing our Communities for All Ages Plan, um, continue looking at our data analysis with our housing mix, things of that nature, that it's not just a one-and-done. But we've really made great strides so far and done a lot of updates that other cities are still looking and trying to accomplish. So, one of the main points for being here tonight with you all is to talk about where we're moving forward. So, this is a list right now of all of the items that you have requested staff to work on. And so, the first thing was inclusionary zoning, that you wanted us to work on, what that looks like and what those options are. And, um, just for awareness, inclusionary zoning is a zoning type where you require a certain percentage or a certain mix of housing units at a market rate in developments. Um, and there's just, just a different zoning policy approach, um, to offer. Um, infill development policy, how to encourage and promote, you know, the, the development on those lots where it's surrounded by already-built-out areas or it's a much smaller lot. And how to encourage that for different residential and housing types. Um, looking at our administrative review procedures, what more can we do to be and continue to be effective and efficient as possible in our policies and our procedures in the development review process? Um, there was interest in us looking at a neighborhood improvement program. Um, several cities locally have programs like that where you help go in and help fund or have a matching grant program to help do exterior rehab program work. It might be to the homes themselves or to the common ground area or to the entrances and things like that. Um, also, to look at a first-time homebuyer assistance program, whether that be through funding, and we did use to have that many, many moons ago, or also through an education and outreach program. Um, there was also interest in us researching and looking into land banks and land trusts as an option, um, ways and looking at how to incentivize attainable housing. And then, also to do a review of our Ignite comprehensive plan, um, including and focusing in on those activity centers. So, that was where and what the direction was that we had still gotten at that point in time. And so, the, one of the things we wanna do tonight is to see, are these still the items? And are there any other items that we should be working on? 'Cause then, what our goal is, is to come back to you all at a later date, take this rock with the beautification rock and all the little pebbles that are underneath these big rocks and for us to prioritize those and show you what a strategy or game plan would be, because all of these items are so important to the community, but it's also pulling from the same resource pool of staff. Um, so, we need to prioritize those things and come up with a game plan to share back with you on how we can approach and tackle all these items along with all the other items too. Um, so, I can pause here if you like.
Well, you're almost to the, you're almost to the end, are you not? That's slide 25.
Yes, the next slide was just, you know, doing these are wonderful. Um, it's not a quick fix. It's not a, um, next day, everything in the world looks different. Um, there are things that we can control and some things that we can't, but it's great that we're having these conversations and moving the needle forward that we can. And then, yes, just the, the next steps on the discussion of what do these things look like? And, and do we have the right list or are there things?
Right.
We need to fix.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm sure you guys are all surprised. I'm so, so, so excited for this conversation. Um, I'm glad that we are doing this work and having this discussion. Um, I appreciate all of the data that you brought to it. I think that's really, um, important to start from. And, you know, some of the things that I look at, um, are the vacancy rates that are, like you mentioned, are owner-occupied, under 1%, are rental property, under 4%. And that kinda tightness in the market drives up prices, right? You can think of it as a big game of musical chairs, right? You have 10 people, nine chairs. Somebody's gonna be left out and the people who want those chairs have to bid up the price to get them. That's, at the end of the day, it's supply and demand, right? So, I think, for me, um, finding ways to increase that supply is the key to all of this. Um, that there's a lot of interesting ideas on here, but some of them, I really worry that the devil's in the details and some of them, I feel like we're, we're over-complicating the problem. So, I'd kinda like to go through the list that, that you put up and kinda give a few thoughts on those and then a couple other, um, additional thoughts that I have. So, inclusionary zoning, I am really skeptical of. There's a lot of empirical work out there that it can actually drive up costs overall because if you put too high of a requirement, it just decreases building period. That if you say to developer, you have to include 5%, 10%, 15% of units that you rent out at a lower rate, it, it just means that they make less money off the project and they're less likely to undertake it in the first place. Um, also, it's a lot of paperwork. Uh, and that's something I really wanna point out with, with some of this is I, I work in affordable housing. Actually, it's, it's my passion. It's my day job. I work in, um, light tech, low-income housing, tax credit work. And the amount of paperwork that you have to do to verify that someone is low-income, that they are still low-income, that you're recertifying them every year. So, if you're, if you're talking about something like inclusionary zoning where you're supposed to hit a particular mark, where you're saying this may, units are earmarked for people at 60% of the area median income, there's a lot more hoops to jump through to that. It's not, it's not just building it and being able to make it work financially. It's a whole lot of extra reporting that you're doing for whatever the life of that project is or whatever we would make it a requirement for, um, it's like in, in my world, it's 15 years. It could be different. But you're, you're putting all these additional layers of reporting and it, and I just worry if we do something like that, that it could end up backfiring, that instead of seeing more housing and more attainable housing, we would just see less overall. So, if it was something like a density bonus where you say, right now, you're allowed to build up to 20 units per acre. If you include some low-income units, we would increase that to 30 units per acre. I would say maybe, but I'm still kinda skeptical that it's something that's really feasible, especially at the scale of a city. I'm all about looking at infill development policy and administrative review, review procedures, anything we can do to make things easier for folks, to make it clearer what the rules of the road are, to, um, rules of the road are, to maybe streamline things, you know, especially if we're looking at an area that's already built up as residential or commercial, it should, it shouldn't be really hard for us to say, okay, right next to that, you can put the same thing. So maybe with infill, can we make it a little bit more streamlined to have that approval process? I would like to see that. Neighborhood improvement program, I don't have really strong feelings about it. It sounds like it could be really expensive. I don't know that it's, again, it feels like kind of a heavy lift for a city of our size. First time home buyer assistance, same kind of thing. It seems like a heavy lift for this kind of community. I'm sure that we could do it, but it seems like a lot of work to try to figure out who's a first time home buyer. Do they meet all of the criteria? What criteria we establish? What funding stream would we establish like that? Some of these seem kind of like reach ideas to me. I don't know about land banks and trusts. I don't know a ton about them, but it again, seems like something that's maybe targeted for a larger city and somewhere that has a lot of blight. And I don't know that that's a major problem that we're facing. I know there are homes that could use some help, but I don't, I don't know that that's the scale of the problem that we're looking at. Incentivizing attainable housing, I think again, for me, it would depend on what we're talking about. I'm, I'm just kind of going on a long laundry list here, but I, I do think each of these is important and it's important to really think about the details of them before we dive deeper into them. So if, again, if it's something where you're going to, to require a ton of reporting to confirm that the housing is in fact attainable, I'm, I'm a little bit skeptical, but not necessarily opposed, especially depending on how we define it. You know, if you're talking about units that rented a certain dollar value regardless of who's in them, that seems like it might be easier to track. So I'm not opposed to it. I'd like to hear more. And then the night plan is always great. We worked hard on that. We had a lot of community input on that, so no issues there. All that said, the thing that I will say up here again and again and again and again is what can we do to make it easier to build houses and to make it easier to build starter homes and to make it easier to build the missing middle housing? So to me, like we keep saying, reducing minimum lot sizes, reducing parking requirements, reducing covered parking requirements. I, in the course of my day job, review zoning codes all over the Midwest and it is rare that you require two covered parking spaces. It is very common to require two parking spaces, but that could be a garage and a driveway space. That could be two driveway spaces. You don't often see a house built without any garage, but again, for a starter home, for a young family, I think a one car garage is fine. And if that can bring down some of the construction costs, I think that's great. When we're talking about zoning, we're talking about what should it be illegal to build? Should it be illegal to build a house with a one car garage in a single family district? And I just don't think that it should be. Should it be illegal to build a house on a lot that's less than 70 feet wide? I don't think that it should be. I think there are other things that we could do if we really wanted to increase supply and help bring down prices, that we could make it easier to build duplexes in the property that's zoned R1. There's no reason why we have to have four different zones and require a massive entitlement process every time somebody wants to make a small change like that. If, if we're serious about increasing attainable housing, I think there's a lot of things that we could do within our zoning code to just make it easier to build things that are affordable and to get through the process. Because something that will discourage people a lot of times is that you don't even want to do the application, you don't want to go through all of the engineering work to put together the P D P because by the time you get to it, you've already spent a bunch of money. But knowing that you're already zoned for it and that it's just administrative process to check the boxes that you have appropriate stormwater drainage and appropriate utility hookups, it's a lot easier to get someone to start that process. So I think that's all I have for right now. I appreciate that we're having this conversation. And just to reiterate, I, I would shy away from inclusionary zoning and home buyer assistance and land banks. I just think it's overly complicated for what we're doing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have been so excited for this to come up and I've written a book. All right, I'm going to join in with Councilmember Shields on the inclusionary zoning. I'm not a fan of that. I don't think that's going to play well for, it might work in the, in the multifamily space, but in single family, I don't, I don't really see that being an option for us. I'm going to not, I'm not going to go through everything on the list. I'm going to go through the ones that I think that are the most important. And they are the administrative review process, procedures. And here's what I, here's what I wanted to talk to you guys about. I think we need to streamline that process. I thought about ways, can, how can we streamline that process? And the first thing would be a builder comes to, developer builder comes to the city to get their plans reviewed. If we had a, a procedure whereby the developer had four to five plans, he was in a 40 lot, say for instance subdivision they were going to build, and those four or five plans could be reviewed all in advance, they wouldn't have to come back every time they were going to pull a permit to have a plan review. I believe that that would be something that could save time, money and effort. I think in some other parts of the countries, the cities are offering approved, city approved list of architects and engineers that go through like a pre qualification process with the city. And these guys, of course, know all the codes and ordinance required. So again, saving time and money, again, streamlining. As we know, the upfront costs for builders are high and, let me see. Making sure that we are not being too restrictive on our exterior designs. I mean, I know we want to raise our design standards. That's important to do on the commercial space. I don't know that that's so important for, for the residential. But I know it was brought to my attention some time ago about we were changing garage elevations. I, I don't know what the reason for that was, but it seemed like being overly restrictive for that.
Or not.
Or not, okay, good.
The new architecture code requirements that we're providing to you are 95% on multifamily, commercial, industrial. The only residential piece for single family was what we provided to you all with the joint planning commission city council meeting. And we just had a really great H B A meeting and.
Okay, that's awesome.
Very satisfied.
Thank you. As far as the first time home buyer assistance, years ago, we had a lease summit bond program. I don't know how that came to us. I don't know if that came through C D B G funds or how, but I think that's something that we need to revisit. It's pretty easy to qualify somebody for those types of bond programs. It's, you go through any kind of lending, lending process, you're going to be able to approve someone to find out if they qualify for that. I think that's something we need to look into. And I will say that incentivizing attainable homes, if we're going to incentivize multifamily, I think we need to incentivize all residential. And what I thought about, and these are ideas, what I thought about was that we know the P D P application process takes about six months. It's time and money. And we know that realistically 24 months is spent from letter of intent to pulling up a permit for a builder. So there's, there's a lot of upfront costs that are happening there. And so I think that we might think about, how could we incentivize land for, for, for attainable home subdivision? Since we're giving incentives other ways, is that possible for us to do that? And then of course, in the contracts, we'd have to have, you know, the, those, those savings would have to be passed on to the consumer. They couldn't be something that the builder then took as profit and we, we can work all those details out. So, and then lastly, I want to just say that I, I've kind of gone around talking to builders that are in, in other cities. And there's a builder that's building what they call frame ready, frame ready houses. And they are, they can be sold between the 280 to 300 range. They are very high quality. They are factory built homes. They come out like a puzzle. There's a skill set, so they have to, these, these vendors, they still have plumbing and electrical, all those things, have to have all those people there, but they have to be trained a little bit differently in order to build these homes. But they're extremely high quality, they're hurricane proof, they are energy efficient. You don't, they're environmentally friendly because you're not, you know, you're not stick building them, so you don't have all the nasties that goes on with, with homes that are built from the ground up. And so I think that's an option that we need to look into. And then I just want to add that I believe that the senior space is a, is a big deal, I believe as well, is getting our seniors out of their homes that they've, they've kind of aged out of because they can't take the steps and all the things. And one way that we might think about doing that is to, and this could be through an incentive program as well, there's a little place called Dogwood Springs, I think. It's over off Langsford and it's like a little village in there. It's the cutest little place and they're, I think the little seniors, they rent there. But those types of situations that we could, or, you know, projects that we could help build to get those seniors out of the homes, which frees up more inventory. It's going to free up some, maybe some first time home buyers or some starter homes that way. And then I just want to say that I, I want to thank you all for, I know how hard you all have worked, Amy, on this and all of you have worked on this. And I want to say that I'm proud of the fact, your big long list that you had with all the things, we should be proud, you should be proud of what we've done because, listen, there's builders in other cities that don't have small lots zoning. They haven't done that. And so they fight with their cities to try to get that done. So I'm proud of the fact that we've already accomplished that. And I think that's it. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there were a lot of good points, especially, you know, making sure we're not being too onerous in the design standards. I think that's very well taken. I, I do still wonder what we could accomplish by changing some of the zoning side that if, because I, I agree, I would like to see subdivisions full of attainable homes, but I wonder if we make the zoning a little bit easier that, you know, you can just buy right, have smaller lots, less parking, just less restriction, if, if we could accomplish a lot of this without increasing a lot of incentives. Because I feel like until, until we do everything we can to get out of the way of building the kind of thing that we want to build, I have a hard time wanting to throw more money at it. I'd say like, and I know we've done some of this in RP4, but like, can, like, I really wanted it, like, if, if we all think this is a good idea and want to see it, why don't we just make it the requirement in R1? Why do we require so much additional planning steps as opposed to just making it something that you can just do by right and through the administrative process? And like, I, I feel like if, like, if, again, not to, but if, if a council member on the dais and I can see completely eye to eye on this, like, it seems like a no brainer. Like, I know we don't always agree on everything, but if we want, if we all agree that this is a good idea, can we just make it easier to do that kind of development by right? And, and then if we still aren't seeing it, or maybe in conjunction, we don't have to pick one or the other, but then maybe look at incentives as well. But I feel like taking away as many of the roadblocks as possible and see what happens and then see how much we have to do to, to push it along past that is something I'd really like to see. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to Councilmember Shields, I think for the good, is what you're saying, for the good. So this is something that we've been working on for a long, long time and I'm open to anything that would help us, you know, and I would hope that we would be able to agree and push things forward. That's the most important thing is pushing things forward and making it happen, getting into action. We talked about it for such a long time and, and, and it's, houses aren't getting cheaper. They're getting more expensive every single day. So it's a problem that's a problem all over the place, but I'd like to be the first one on the map that really solved the problem. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I can read you my collective list from what I think I'm gathered to see if we have consensus.
We're not done talking.
Okay. I was doing over pause or, yeah.
They always wait till I say something to get some riled up.
Yeah, I gotcha.
And they all doot, 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 and all of a sudden I'm like, oh, so you do want to talk.
I thought it was a little quiet.
I was thinking about exactly what to say to get them fired up, but, because let me tell you, there's some things that were said just now that there's a lot of details in there that we, we would have to talk about. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So I do think my colleagues did have a lot of great points that I do agree with. I would say if I had to knock one off, or two, my number one would be inclusionary zoning. I'm not a fan of that. Actually, I was doing some reading, too, that that's just not great for developers. Infill development policy, I've never been a fan of that. I don't like the thought of just squeezing things in in our green spaces just because we can. I don't, I think we should enjoy some green and we don't need to pack everything full. So I'm not, I'm not a fan of that personally. And I would, I would agree with Councilmember Shields, you know, just, and I would like to take a look at it, just taking away the roadblocks like she was mentioning and just see what that looks like. I don't want to give too much freedom to then we're just like, oh my gosh, what, what are we looking at now? We have a, a neighborhood that's just out of control, you know? I, I don't want to lower our standards, again, going with what Councilmember Rader was saying. High standards, but let's look at where we can loosen the reins a little bit that still keep our standards high. And this is where I differ a bit. I, I'm not a fan of taking away their, I'm, I'm okay with smaller lots. I'm not okay with the one car garage or the, or the less parking because even going through neighborhoods now, going through the neighborhoods that have parking on the street, it just, it looks, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, it looks trashy. And I get that that's their property, but driving through it and it represents who we are as a city, I just don't think that's something personally that we should be approving because if, if we're starting it out like that, what's the end game? So I just, again, I know it's my personal preference, but, but again, I do agree with a lot of what they, both of them said. I would love to just dig in deeper. But again, I know you need us to limit some of these so you're not spending hours and hours on all of these. So I would say minus one and two for sure for me. And then I would like to look into the administrative review procedures. Neighborhood improvement plan, again, I don't, I feel like I don't know enough about that or what that would look like to be able to say yes or no on that. So I'm a little indifferent on that. Everything, first time home buyer assistance, I would say I'm not sure that's where we need to necessarily spend our time. Maybe when we've done everything else and we can look, and you have all the free time, maybe that's what you could do. Yeah, no, I mean, I think this looks great. I, I'm probably with Councilmember Shields, too. I, I wouldn't probably waste my time on the land banks and trusts either. Yeah, that's just my two cents. That's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Councilmember Shields went line by line and covered us all very well and did a great job, but to kind of scratch a few off the list for me, inclusionary zoning, definitely neighborhood improvement program, kind of with Councilmember Hodges, I don't know how that would look from the city's perspective and a cost with that. The administrative review procedure, I think going back to that, I think back in the days when we shared time together on the planning commission, we talked a lot about it. And I, I think today we have to look at something, lot sizes, as Councilmember Shields said, some different styles of housing, maybe. I'm not a fan of one car garages, but I think the, the main factor in some of this to me in my mind is just building material costs. They're going up and they're going to continue to go up. And we also battled the Jackson County property tax that's got to be figured into all of this. So I think administrative review procedures is a huge thing for me and land banks and trusts, I've never seen that work real well. And I would love to see a way, incentivizing attainable housing, I just, I don't know how you do that when you're selling someone a property, how the, how that would work. But those are just my two cents on it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mayor Tim Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I won't repeat many of the good ideas that have been discussed already, but also want to thank you, Ms. Nassib and the team for listening to us at the retreat and helping us with this giant rock. It is an issue, not only in our community, it's an issue across the country. So I know it's not unique to us and, but we do have to be thoughtful and strategic in how we're going to address it here, right? And that's why we're talking about this. So this is good timing. So this is good timing. I, I appreciate that we have had a plan we've been following, the Ignite Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. The data confirms that, I guess we're doing some things correct and that's encouraging. But the thing that we cannot, we can't control directly is the market and the construction costs. I think that's a problem everywhere. And so looking at your list here and just, again, not to repeat what everybody has already said, but there's certain things we can do to, to impact that. And the way we review our procedures, administrative procedures, I think obviously is spot on. We, we can control that. One and two, I would agree, I don't, I don't think we should really, at this point, consider much in those areas from your list. Neighborhood improvement program, I think there's a lot that needs to really be researched as far as that's concerned. I'm not sure exactly what it is that you mean or that she means by that, but I'd have to see a lot more detail about what, what is intended with that. First time home buyer assistance, I mean, I think that's something that you can work with lenders on. I don't think the city can, needs to take that on directly. And, and there's other programs and resources out there that maybe we can look at, perhaps teaming up with other groups. There's other groups that do these kind, provide these kind of resources. Land bank and trusts, I think, I would agree with the comment earlier, I think that's something that's, is more common in larger urban areas that does have a lot of extra land. I don't think that really applies to us in, in our community. Incentivizing attainable housing, I think that's something we should look at. I don't know what that looks like either, but as someone suggested, I think it was Councilmember Rader, at, at a certain point, a few years back, there, there was a program available for, for primarily first time home buyers. There's a lot of, we're, we're talking about retaining a lot of our younger population, new workforce individuals. Many of us up here on the DIAS have, have children, young adult children that, that are in those situations right now as we speak. My daughter couldn't find a home as a, as a teacher on a teacher's salary here just within the last year. She couldn't afford to live in Lee Summit in a, in a newer home. And so we need to look at, possibly looking at older neighborhoods where we can do some kind of, look at the demographics and, and work with the, the industry, with, with the real estate industry to see if they can help, help the city and help us market those, those perhaps, those older neighborhoods to younger professionals or younger workforce individuals. So I don't think we need to take all these on ourselves as a city, but we can partner with other groups and the market, the experts. I think there's several of us up here that actually have real estate background and have been in the industry for, for some time. I, I think, I think collectively, we can figure out how to work with the right industry leaders that are very engaged and active in our community. So I think we should look into that, some kind of incentive attainable housing for younger workforce. And as far as, again, I already said, I think the Ignite and Comprehensive Plan, it's very encouraging that we have, we have, we have had a plan. The plan is not always definite and isn't always perfect, but it's a guide. And I'm encouraged that we as a community have at least followed that. What we have not been able to control are interest rates and, and market construction costs. But we can do our best to try to mitigate some of that, some of those higher expenses. And I think this is encouraging, this is a good start. I don't think we're going to solve it tonight, but I think we're off to a good start. And thank you all for, for taking this on and listening and it's going to continue to evolve, but we got to get it right. I think we can, we can be a leading catalyst across at least this Kansas City area by coming up with some good ideas and this is a good start. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lowell?
Thank you. Well, I guess I'll just take a, kind of a different position because the truth is, you know, I look at all this and, and I don't know what the right answer is. One thing you hear me say a lot of are unintended outcomes. One thing I know for sure is that when governmental bodies have jumped in to try and correct or change markets is not necessarily ended up to the benefit of, of the end user. You look at our median household income of 104,000, our median home value of 313,000, median rent, you know, that's, that's from decades of, of policy that made Lee Summit a place to be. It's why we attract a lot of the great users that we have in the city commercially. What happens if we start to change the requirement or the entry level into this community? Again, I'm not saying right or wrong. What happens to the home values that invested, you know, years ago that have been built up over time? Do those go down? Again, I don't know. I don't think any of us know. The other thing is, you know, are we, do we want to be a city of renters or do we want to be a city of owners if we start to build, you know, how do we, and again, I don't know that that's necessarily a bad thing or a good thing. I think you have to have the right mix. Like I saw the single family permits pulled, I don't, how many of those were for rent versus for sale? Were those all for sale or, because we had a lot of single family rental communities coming in too. You know, the truth is, is that, and this, Councilmember Lopez hit on it, you know, there are a lot of macroeconomic factors that have kind of led to this housing problem. And that's to do with inflation, that's to do with, you know, the, the increase in building costs. While many people, many middle class people have not seen their wages increase in line with these inflationary, you know, policies that have happened, a lot of times because of government intervention. And so I just, I'm not opposed to looking at ways that we can, that we can do things to uplift this, this community and to provide housing options. I, I do think the expectation, like, housing ownership is, is a big responsibility. It's not right for everyone. You know, there are things that you have to do over time to keep up with that place. And so I just, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant to jump out and say this is the policy we need to implement because I, again, I worry about the unintended outcomes of those things. And so I think there's some good ideas here, you know, maybe it is starting with some zoning policy. I think the neighborhood improvement program was something where we had discussed going into older dilapidated areas where we could actually implement something that would allow someone to come in and renovate and uplift that, that, that house with some sort of incentive program that could be passed on to the buyer. So now you might get something that, you know, looks refreshed. You know, I know when I was out of college and, you know, your daughter Beth though that is looking for a house, I mean, I didn't expect that I could buy a new home when I came out of college, certainly on my salary. And some of the things we did when we were growing up was maybe we'd buy a home together, we'd buy an older house in a neighborhood, or we would move up kind of slowly as our income increased and some of those things. So I don't, I don't think it's a right to be able to own a new home. I do think there should be options, but I also think we built a really good community without intervening. And, and where we are today is a product of a lot of people investing in this town long before it became what it is today. And so I think we have to be very mindful of the, of the residents and the people that helped build this community that we're not doing anything to reverse that track. And so I'm open to suggestions and I'm not closed minded to this idea. I just think it's important that a lot of, a lot of times these ideas come, come with great intention and empathy and wanting to help. And sometimes you can reverse course on some things that made this city great. So that's all I have to say about it. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlo?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think everything that's been set up here is very good. Just the one, few things that kind of stuck out for me are, you know, first of all with the, you know, do we allow more single family homes, smaller single family homes that only have a one car garage? And, and I understand that we do allow for that in areas and that's all fine with me. Putting it in any area, I don't know. And really it's more of a, a safety issue looking at that than it is the aesthetics or, you know, putting a two bedroom, one car garage home next to a six bedroom, four car garage home. That part I don't care about, but the more parking you have on the street, the easier it is to have accidents, the more kids that can run out from behind those parked cars and not be seen by a passerby. You know, the more trash trucks hit people's cars, the more our snowplows can't get down the streets, our fire vehicles can't get down the streets. So to me, it's not what it looks like for the neighborhood. I do want to make sure our neighborhoods are kept up well as they continue to be here in Lee Summit. But really, when we're looking at these things, I always want to keep safety in mind before anything else and to make sure that we are not doing things that we're not intending to do. So I think many of these are great things to look at and I think CDC is going to be pretty busy for a while with these conversations, which I'm very happy with. But I just really think that we need to keep the safety of everybody in the neighborhood, including those people that are going to be going through the neighborhoods or trying to respond to the neighborhoods first of mind when we're looking at these things. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I think there've been some good points brought up that I wanted to kind of expand on. I think, you know, the points about markets and kind of focusing on what we can control and, and, and to me, when we talk about, you know, well intentioned things have unintended consequences, that's a large part of how I see our current zoning code, is that it is an impediment in the free market, like, just by, by definition. There are a bunch of restrictions on how you can use property that you own. And sometimes that's warranted and sometimes it's not. But I feel like we need to make sure as, when we look at these different regulations, is the juice worth the squeeze? Is, is what we lose out when we put these regulations in place worth having them? And is it, is it having a community that looks a certain way worth the fact that your kids can't afford to live here? And so that's just kind of always my driving thought is, is, is this regulation, even however long it's been here, is it worth maybe the cost that it has to being able to develop and grow and have more people afford to live here at different points in their lives? The other thing I wanted to say is, is that, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, new home price and, you know, what we can do to have new attainable homes built. But whatever, whatever homes get built increases attainable housing, no matter what price point they're sold at. Because how the market works is you, you build a $600,000 house, the person in the $400,000 house moves into it, somebody else moves into their house and down the chain and it frees up something in the lower rungs for that starter home to open up for a new family. So I'm, I'm totally open to this and obviously I'm, I'm a big supporter of, of doing what we can to loosen up some of these restrictions so we can build different things. But whatever we can do to encourage more housing construction at, at all points will help these issues for everybody. I know it can, it can seem counterintuitive because we, we always talk about, well, these luxury apartments, they rent for $1,300 a month, how is that attainable? But the person who moved into that moved out of somewhere else. Maybe it's their mom's basement, but maybe it's the next apartment down the rung. And so it's just what can we do to make it so that more folks can both live here and work here and play here, as we're always talking about? So that's always kind of my guiding star. And then I guess I, I have a question about the incentivizing attainable housing. So I don't know that that means the same thing to all of us and I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. Because when I think about it, I think about an apartment that rents for under $1,200 a month, but I don't think that's what everybody is talking about. So I just want to make sure, are, are we talking about incentivizing single family construction or apartments that are not in the strictly luxury scale or what was that conversation?
Yes and yes. It was, it was a pretty broad stroke conversation when we had it at CDC originally and it was just, should we look at incentivizing residential developments that come in if they're going to provide a certain price point or a type of housing that we either don't have on the market or that might be at market or attainable for folks, or maybe it's a workforce housing type? It was very broad.
Okay. I'm still open to that conversation. I'm curious what it would look like, but I do think that there's a lot we can do with a lot of other levers to help these issues without anything to, to throw public money at it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. Every Realtor on this panel knows that we do currently have affordable homes in Lee Summit. We just don't have very much and a lot of them have one car garages. But I just wanted to say this, first of all, the houses that I was, was talking to you about earlier about the builder that was building the, the stick ready or the frame ready homes, those are actually one car, they're tandems. So they're built as a one car garage, but they go from the front to the back. And there's, there's driveways on each side of that, only the back driveway is a large gravel type of the drive. So there's not the impervious surface there. And then I wanted to also say in, in, in comment to Councilmember Lovell that what I envision in this situation with affordable homes, if we have small lots, you can't put little houses next to big houses. It doesn't aesthetically look good. So these would be, in my vision or my view, these would be separate subdivisions of these types of homes. And then they could always be like Arborwalk where they graduate up to, in Arborwalk you have neo-traditional type homes, all kinds of different homes there. You have duplexes, townhomes, you have the small little bungalow homes that are narrow and garages in the back. That is how I've kind of envisioned doing something like that. So it's just, listening to everybody's comments, which are awesome, was my thought, was this would be something that wouldn't be like in the middle of Lakewood or in the middle of Rain Tree. It would be in an area where that is what you have, that type of subdivision. So it looks, it comes together and looks architecturally and aesthetically pleasing.
Sure. And I think, just if it helps clarify, in November of last year, we did update our regulations. So we do have, single family homes were not always allowed in the RP4 district. And so that got approved and adopted. And so our single, single families, the smallest lots can go down to 35 feet wide. And that would come before you all through a PDP process to that point to be able to review and, and look at that. But we do have that option available now. We've only, we've had a couple people inquire about it, but no one has come in yet to pull that trigger.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do want to say I live in a neighborhood where you have big houses next to little houses, next to apartments, next to big houses. And it's, I think it's great. It's not for everybody. And a big part of, for me, what something like zoning reform is about is that it's not about forcing anyone to live a certain kind of place. It's about giving people options. It's just to say that we are not going to make it illegal to build this. But if you want to live in a planned development with deed restrictions about minimum garage sizes and lot sizes, you can, I have no problem with anybody doing that or building it. I just don't want to make it the mandatory minimum in Lee Summit. And I think, you know, we had a bunch of folks here talking earlier about the charm of living on Douglas Street. Like, that's what all of our historic downtown is, is a mix of different kinds of houses, different sizes, different architectural styles. You know, I love my old Victorian house, but it's not the only kind of house on the block and I think that's nice. So again, for me, this is just about giving people choices. And if, and if they choose to live in a subdivision where everything lurks a certain way, that's great. I have friends that live in those kind of neighborhoods too and they're great too. I just want to make it easier for individuals and developers to build different kinds of things, give people more choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Nassif, would you go to slide 18, I think? So, no, the one on regional and national data? Yeah, that one. So you used these median incomes. Median is middle is, so why'd you use that instead of average? I'm just curious. I'm just, you know.
Oh, sure. Just because it was easier to obtain median for the whole metro and national and so we wanted to keep things consistent for comparable.
That's fine. I can work with median, but I will say, I just want to make sure everybody knows that the average is a lot higher than that. So you're looking at an average price of a home in the metro, average, not median, is 373.
Exactly right.
Yeah. And so this is the middle, which is fine. We'll go with. We'll go with the middle. But I just want everybody to know that there is difference and new construction is a big part of why the average is higher. But, given that, I did, I just went in and pulled the same data from 10 years ago. And I'm just curious for my councilmembers, what was the average price?
If I could see that smile.
Of a home in the metro 10 years ago? Close, 165, half that. And so, prices have basically doubled. That's the median. The, the averages are typically higher. So when I think about trying to solve for affordable housing or attainable housing, whatever, and I think about prices doubling in 10 years, it's, it's just, it was an avalanche. It was a snowball that we're trying to solve for. So, but I've been through a lot in my life in real estate and so I asked Mr. Dunning to draw upon, when did you start? When did you start here?
I started with the city in 1997.
Okay. That's the perfect time. That is the perfect time. Because, no offense to you guys, us, the city, but a lot happened between 1997 and 2003 and '04. And I mean, so many homes were built. And I'm just, like, when I, when we start talking about reviewing the administrative, I am really proud of how far we've come. 35-foot wide lots, that's shocking. That's wonderful. I'm so pleased that we've gotten that far. Is it, how many people are built? At least it got to 60 or 55 foot. That's really where the big thing is, is you can build on those types of lots and you can build a nice home. I don't know about a 35-foot home. It's going to be long and skinny or something, I don't know. But, so, we, we've changed these policies over time and the conversation I'm hearing tonight is so different than what I, conversations that were among councilmembers 10 years ago. But in '97, you're building, we are allowing homes to be built, boom, 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 boom. And I'm just curious, it just seemed like, when did you start putting in more regulations and such? Because a lot of homes were built and a lot of people, like me, were trying to prevent buyers from buying a bad home that was being built because it was out of control. I mean, was it out of control or not? You tell me.
Yeah, it, it was. And, and I would say that big shift from a code perspective, right, a building standards perspective, was around 2000. That's when we went from a, what we called the uniform building code to a residential building code. And it pulled together much more concise, you know, where do you go to to build a home and the standards in which you build by? That's where things started to shift and greater focus on standards that apply to home construction. That would be my response to that.
Okay. So, the question is, then, these homes get built and then a lot of bad things happened between 2000 and 2004. And, actually between, all the way up to 2008, basically. But, I just feel like, a lot of people felt like the city allowed things to get out of control. I mean, did, did the city suffer a little bit from people saying, "How could this ever pass city inspection?" That's what I'm getting at because I was selling foreclosures back then and it's like, holy cow. And then you just started avoiding certain, you're not supposed to, but you started avoiding certain neighborhoods because certain builders were building there and they just weren't following regulations. So, we have, over time, you're saying, tightened it up. And I'm willing to loosen them as long, if it's, if it's something that is burdensome, that is, that is a way to simplify it, like, you know. So I'm for the review, the administrative review. I'm for that. But, there is a very strong limit, very similar to what John Lovell, Councilmember Lovell was saying. Like, I'm like, I've, I've lived through this before, so I don't want to go that far, especially when we're trying to solve for, this is the really, the big thing, is how much is a, I don't know if Ms. Nassif has this, but how much is a, let me pull it. Oh, here we go. How much is the average price of a new home, or median? Let's go with median. We're sticking with median, not, 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 not average, median home in Kansas City, the metro. Do you have that?
The median home value or medium new home value?
New home value.
I don't have the KC Metro.
All right. So it's 500,000.
Yeah.
So you're talking about median value of three, what is it? 313?
373.
No, median?
Oh. The median right now is 260, the median for KC Metro is 265.
Yeah, that's the survey you're doing.
But, yeah.
It's really around 300,000.
It's around 300.
It's 300, 310. So, and then you're looking at a new home, median, that's 500. I mean, there's such a big gap to solve for when you're doing new construction. I mean, and it's widened so much from when it was 10 years ago. I mean, it's, it's, it's a tough thing to solve for. I'm for expediency, streamlining, I'm, I'm for it, where, where it's reasonable. So I would love for you all to dive into that, like council's asking. So, I think, I don't, I, I'm not, I, there's, I think they've already reviewed the whole problems with some of these other ones. If you could go to that page again, that lists them all out. I don't think anybody up here was for inclusionary zoning. And I think the reason why is some of these are not sustainable. Whatever we're going to do, we want it to be sustainable, so 10 years from now, it, it needs to still be in play to make a home affordable or attainable or, so inclusionary zoning, there's so many problems later on down the line in controlling that, that that's a tough one. I'd, I'd want to know what you mean by infill development, because I think, I think that's always important to give property owners that, a house burnt down, how do we help that owner sell that property, fill that, infill that? I've seen really resourceful people try to figure out how to buy a duplex lot, but they're like, man, I can't, by today's standards, I can't build a duplex on that lot, even though a duplex needs to go there because it's, it's, it's in a, an area where there's all kinds of duplexes. It's, there's only one thing that can go there, a duplex.
Yes.
So are we going to help them build, find a way to, to give them a, a chance to build on that infill lot or not? So I, I think that's where infill really needs to be looked at is, you know, otherwise, I've seen a lot of houses burned down in Kansas City that never got built on again and it wasn't necessarily a good thing. They ended up being spaces that a lot of trash ended up, trash lots is what they ended up becoming. So, what else am I for? I, I'm intrigued, I'm, I'm not for the first, I love helping first-time homebuyers, but this is not sustainable. It's helping someone one time and in Lee Summit, if you look at first-time homebuyers, all of our entry-level homes are being bought, like, snapped off the market. So, we're not, we're not increasing, like Councilmember Shields was saying, when we're doing this, we're not increasing the supply. We're, we're doing a one-time, simple-hit, quick-fix. And I don't even know that that first-time homebuyer, there's so much behind what goes into, are we really helping someone that needs help or someone that just knows how to use the system? So I'm, I'm not, I'm not real keen on that because it's not sustainable. So, I'm really intrigued by landbanks, but I might be alone up here on that one. I'd like to learn more about it. We've got an expert at the EDC that knows all about landbanks. So, teach us. Because I'm, I'm willing to listen on that one. Because that's, that's something that, I don't know how we control it. If we can, if we control it, then it could be sustainable. If you can't control it, then I'm not so sure, it's just a one-off, it's just a one-off again. And then to think that, okay, I think we are incentivizing some housing with a lot of the things we're doing. It just, it comes down to how you define incentivizing. And I think we have been, to a degree, incentivizing because when you incentivize, like Councilmember Shields, some of the things she was talking about, the reducing parking requirements or not requiring it to be covered. I'm not, I, I just know a lot of people that, I mean, you drive downtown and big, beautiful houses sometimes don't have a park, a garage, they don't even have a driveway. So, I'm pretty open because I've seen a lot of stuff. But I also know, I'm still back to, I don't, I don't know that I want to incentivize to the, to the point where, or, excuse me, streamline administratively the look. I, I think homes need to look like a home. And not, so I'm for anything innovative, you know, the, she was careful with the word she used, I want to be careful too.
Frame ready?
Frame-ready homes. I'm for frame-ready homes. But I, I don't necessarily want to give up the, the total streetscape, the aesthetics, the, I think that, that, the curb appeal, you know, Douglas Street, even though it has all those different homes, it's the, it's the different look that makes that street so inviting, you know? So, yes, there's big homes and there's little bitty tiny ranches with no parking, no garage, no driveway even hardly. I mean, so, I, I'm really open to most of these things. I just don't want to give up, I don't know, I don't want to solve for a problem that we can't solve for. I want to make a difference, move the needle with regard to being easy to work with for builders, but not to the point where we're creating that problem that was alluded to by a couple councilmembers. So, I appreciate you putting all this together too. And we've been looking forward to this conversation. I think everybody got, did everybody get to talk? Yeah, I think everybody talked. All right. Does anybody want to add anything on? Does that help you all?
Yes.
No inclusionary housing, zoning?
Yes. We got rid of one, I added seven more. But I feel good about it. I think they're all really great things. Everything that we had, number one, we won't look at, number five, not looking at, but the rest, it's more of a, let's just learn more, but let's also pay the most attention to our zoning requirements, our zoning district requirements and our process efficiencies and administrative reviews.
Yep. Yeah. And if you can find a ready-made, ready?
They're frame-ready.
I should know this, I'm in real estate. Frame-ready, yeah.
Product.
Builder. Let's invite them to move right here in Lee Summit. We've got some land that we've banked that we're going to give to them so they can create some cute little homes with nice little front porches.
Mayor, he's ready.
And parking.
He's ready to frame-ready.
Yep. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job, everybody. You've got to be careful with your terminology these days, like, because they do and I'm, like, I still call, like, I don't think it's that bad, but like, there are certain homes that I call shotgun-style homes. And it's really, I don't think I should say that, it's not really correct. I mean, but I, but I can't, how do you describe it? Oh, long and skinny, goes deep, you know? Huh? You can shoot through the front door and it goes out the back door. That's exactly right. She knows, but she's in housing too. Do you, did you ever live in a shotgun home?
Yes.
Do you live in one now?
Yes.
Okay. Did, was that a productive conversation?
Yes.
You, did you learn from us?
I did.
Well, did you learn what you need to teach us?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Well, let's go to proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. Councilmember Rader, would you please read bill number 25-116?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to second reading, bill number 25-116, ordinance approving modification number one, to an agreement for professional engineering services for Rain Tree Beepe Bridge Repair with Great River Engineering for an increase of $64,605 with an amended not-to-exceed amount of $137,385, $137,385 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. Motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-116 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please score the vote. It passes unanimously. Councilmember Rader, would you please?
Yes, Mayor. I move to, to adopt, for adoption, bill number 25-116, an ordinance approving modification number one, two, an agreement for professional engineering services for Rain Tree Beepe Bridge Repair with the Great River Engineering for an increase of $64,605 with an amended not-to-exceed amount of $137,385 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. A motion to adopt, bill number 25-116 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please score the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle, would you please read bill number 25-117?
Thank you, Mayor. I move bill number 25-117, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 1093 for the Rain Tree Spillway Bridge Deck Rehabilitation Project to Concrete Strategies LLC in the amount of $1,161,870.65 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same. Oh, be second read, sorry.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-117 by Councilmember Carlisle, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? This goes all the way back to the first time you were up here.
I know, and that's a crazy amount of money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we got it, got it resolved.
Here we go.
Wow. I didn't think we were ever going to get this one resolved. So, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please score the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Carlisle, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move bill number 25-117, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 1093 for the Rain Tree Spillway Bridge Deck Rehabilitation Project to Concrete Strategies LLC in the amount of $1,161,870.65 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same be adopted.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number 25-117 by Councilmember Carlisle, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read bill number 25-118?
Thanks, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, bill number 25-118, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 888 for the curb repair FY26 program to Freeman Concrete Construction LLC in the amount of $3,395,895 and authorizing the city manager to execute agreement for the same.
Thank you. A motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-118 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does go to second reading. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number 25-118, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 888 for the curb repair FY26 program to Freeman Concrete Construction LLC in the amount of $3,395,895 and authorizing the city manager to execute agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number 25-118 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 25-119?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, bill number 25-119, an ordinance approving change order number one to the agreement for construction of the crack seal FY25 program number 816 between the city of Lee Summit and Pavement and Management LLC for a decrease in the contract price of minus $5,093.55 for revised agreement in the amount of $291,906.45 and to increase the project timeline by 162 calendar days and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-119 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of bill number 25-119, an ordinance approving change order number one to the agreement for construction of the crack seal FY25 project number 816 between the city of Lee Summit and Pavement and Management LLC for a decrease in the contract price of minus $5,093.55 for revised agreement in the amount of $291,906.45 and to increase the project timeline by 162 calendar days and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number 25-119 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 25-120?
I move to second reading, bill number 25-120, an ordinance approving award of RFQ number 2025-051 to Sterns Conrad and Schmidt Consulting Engineers, Inc., DBA SCS Engineers for a one-year contract with four possible one-year renewal options for on-call environmental professional engineering services, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-120 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for adoption of bill number 25-120, an ordinance approving award of RFQ number 2025-051 to Sterns Conrad and Schmidt Consulting Engineers, Inc., DBA SCS Engineers for a one-year contract with four possible one-year renewal options for on-call environmental professional engineering services, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number 25-120 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you all. We will go now to committee reports. Oh, we don't have meetings next week, or, a meeting next week, so we probably don't have any other meetings either, do we? Okay. Um, council comments? Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to, um, talk about the, um, the appeal hearing that we had last week about the Galaxy liquor. And I tell you, this has really laid heavy on my heart for a week, so, I, I talked to some, what really brought it forward for me was, I talked to some concerned residents, I talked to some retired former educators about the decision that we made. Now, I understand that the school, and this is, this has to do with the liquor store being so close to the school, I understand it's outside the buffer area, but, um, I thought about, a few weeks ago, we had an, an application that came before us for a, a gas station, and the, the comment was made that the gas station was not, uh, that there'd been trouble with other gas stations in the area, and that wasn't something that they wanted in that area. And so that, again, I thought about that, we voted that down. Now, we did come back and rescind that vote. I'm not asking to rescind or to reconsider. Here's what I'm asking, for your consideration, that we look at, and we can put this with the CDC or whatever committee, that the staff feels that is right, that I would like to propose that we lengthen and expand the state statute separation requirement for schools, I'm not worried about the churches at this point, to be at least 1,000 feet from any liquor or tobacco establishment. So, I guess in other words, I would just say that, that we would, we would change the ordinances to state that, and we can do it, to state that any school should be at least 1,000 feet or more, uh, from any liquor store, tobacco establishment, anything like that.
Okay, well, let's make sure we understand what we voted on last week. So, last week, it was outside of the 100 feet, that's the statute?
No.
Mr. Head, why don't you explain, last week, we had the 100 foot, we had the 300 foot, the decision we made was in between there, so, can you tell us the parameters, please?
Yes, Mayor. Um, the, our current ordinance prohibits any alcohol establishment from being licensed within 100 feet of any school, church, or place gen, regularly used for worship. Um, it also says that for such a business to be located within 300 feet of one of those types of, of a school or, or, uh, church, then it must come to the council, and only you have the ability to approve that. Now, beyond 300 feet is within the discretion, if they meet all of the requirements and so on, it's within the discretion of the, the police chief, as, as our director of liquor control. Um, the statute is a little different than what our code says. Our, the statute says that they, a liquor-licensed establishment may be placed within 100 feet of a school or church, if approved by the city council, and the city, a city, may regulate within up to 300 feet. We'll have to check again and make sure, but I do not believe, based on what I know right now, that we can go beyond 300 feet in our regulation of liquor-licensed establishments. Um, we'll want to double-check that and make sure that that, my recollection of the law is correct on that, um, and we will certainly do that. Um, but the statute in Missouri is, uh, liquor is considered a very highly-regulated area, and generally, unless the state has given the city flexibility, we are really limited to what the statute says that we can do. So, um, we'll want to double-check on that, to see if that's even a possibility, but, um, my recollection right now is that we can only regulate that distance up to 300 feet from those, from those locations, but, like I said, we'll check.
Okay, so, the statute's 100 feet, that, that we have to, we can approve it, but-
Under our code, we cannot approve-
Okay, under our code, but under the statute, you could possibly, but if the statute were 300, well, basically, if it's be, if it's below 300, if it's below 300 right now, we have to approve it. It does not get approved.
Correct. Between 300 and 100-
Okay, so we already have the ability to approve or not approve it at 300 feet. At 300 feet or less. So, you're wanting to expand it to 1,000 feet?
I want, I would like for Mr. Head to look into this.
Yeah.
That's what I would really like.
He can look into it, but I'm not assigning this to CDC at 1,000 feet.
That's fine, Mayor, as long as we can find out if there's something that we can do to make it so that we can change it so that, it would have to be the, um, the, the distance from the school would be farther away from those types of establishments.
Further than 300 feet.
Than, than the 300 feet that it is now.
Which this, this, this one last week was more than 300 feet.
Not very much, I don't think it was.
It was more than 300 feet.
Just not from the church.
Chief? Hmm? From the school.
Yeah, I think anything that has to do with liquor or tobacco, should, I said liquor, you know, alcohol, tobacco establishments.
Mayor Travis Forbes, Chief of Police. Uh, yes, it, it actually was more than 300 feet from the school. Uh, it did intersect the parking lot, but that's not how we measure it, it's from building to building, so, it, uh, it was close, but not, uh, it was more than 300 feet.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Head, can you go ahead and check into that and report back to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Yep. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just for the record, I don't really feel like that's something that I want to take up as a council, just that there's not full consensus, but not understand why the concern's there. Um, the comments that I had tonight, um, were just a couple. Um, one is about the, the residents that we had from northeast Douglas tonight. Um, you know, I'm a downtown resident, I, um, love my neighbors, my constituents, um, and I really do understand their concerns. Um, I've, the, the big mature trees that are in the neighborhood really are a big benefit, and, and when you're walking, they make it more walkable. There's a stretch of Douglas between downtown and southeast Douglas, um, towards where I live, that there's no trees for about a block, and it just kills me in the summer. Uh, can't, can't do it. Um, but that said, we did go through a really extensive public comment, um, process on this. I, I attended the public meetings, I know there were virtual public meetings where folks could even click on their part of the map and make a comment on exactly what tree, on exactly what property, and what their concern was. And I think it's important to continue to educate folks and reach out to them and show them, you know, what the plans are, what it's gonna look like when it's done, where their tax dollars are going, but, um, I understand why we can't reopen the process at this point, that we've, that there's kind of some still minor design things to be finagled, some easements to be acquired, and possibly some, some minor things to be adjusted in terms of where folks' driveways go and that kind of thing, but I understand that we can't really reopen the full design process, even though, I, I really do understand their concerns that it, that it'll change some things. Um, but I also, I think it's gonna be a benefit to the neighborhood, I think the new paths are gonna be great, and, um, even though it makes me sad, I, I do also know that a lot of those trees are, are dead or dying already. We've got a lot of ash trees that are not in great shape on northeast and southeast Douglas, so some of those, there's a good chunk of the trees that folks are upset about coming out, that are, that are gonna have to come out one way or another within the next, um, several years. So, I think this is a, a good way to accomplish that, but also bring in some really great improvements for the city. So, um, I appreciate, um, staff working this up, preparing, you know, more detail for us to share with our constituents, and hopefully meeting with folks to help educate them about what's going on, but I, but I absolutely understand why we have to continue forward with the project, as it's, as it's been planned and negotiated through that public process, um, to this point. So, I just wanted to, to say that. Um, and then, my last thing was, um, I hear that our mirrors are maybe even coming to downtown soon, and I hope that's the case.
What is?
Oh, the safety mirrors.
Oh.
Um, so I don't, I don't know how far along we are on that. Um, and I did want to ask Mr. Park, uh, did we ever figure out if we'd be able to have one on the alley that, um, comes out where, where downtown Main Street's offices? Um, it's, it's a beautiful little alley, but folks do drive the wrong way down it, and I, uh, was walking my son downtown just today, and someone came out the wrong way from the runway and, uh, one way and didn't even stop till they're halfway into the sidewalk, so, it's just-
To answer your question, just kind of as a general update on the downtown mirrors project, we do have the, the legal form that's been prepared through Mr. Head's office. Um, we're preparing also some exhibits that show how they would be attached to buildings. Uh, we've visited with others in regards to how do we properly attach these historic structures without doing any damages, so we have a better understanding of what the property owner could expect. And so now that we are putting together those exhibits to illustrate what the attachments look like, as well as the agreement, we'll be approaching all those property owners. And I do believe, even though it's one way, um, out of the abundance of caution and, and listening, uh, I think that is one of the locations that we have proposed. Um, granted, if, if these property owners come back and they're not interested or not cooperative, you know, we'll move on to the next site and keep going until we find maybe some solutions.
Well, I, I really appreciate that, especially if you're, uh, one of the many parents of small kids that's walking with a stroller or wagon, it is, it is hard to peek around those corners and, and keep kids safe. So, thank you so much for your work on that. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Park, you wanna, like, just make a comment about the, um, the fact that we're gonna do this really nice, like we did Third Street going west?
Uh, doing Douglas, you're referring to?
Uh-huh.
Yes, I think it'll be a great project for the community, and, and the spirit of what we took to the voters in 2017, when we were talking about making it a complete street. And it is unfortunate, we don't want to remove trees, we don't, but, um, as I spoke to, uh, Mr. Carroll outside the office after an interview with, with the media, I explained, we do want to meet with them, we need to meet with all of them and continue working and perhaps, uh, you know, sharing more information, they come to a better understanding of the project. I think one of the biggest misconceptions is, is that this trail or the sidewalk is really the, the principal cause of tree removals, and, and really, it's what's below the surface. So many of these water lines, the storm sewers, and you look at where all these trees are being removed, for the most part, it's because we have to dig out, replace all the infrastructure that's below ground. Um, and, and I can appreciate that's hard to understand when you're looking at just a plan, and sometimes we don't communicate those plans.
You should just drive down Third Street, it's insane right now. The Third Street going from downtown, if, if council members have not driven on that road, you've got to go see how intense it is. I mean, how deep is that on that one side?
Uh, where the road is actually dropping?
Yeah.
Uh, it's dropping a couple feet. I don't anticipate we're dropping Douglas to that extent, but we do have to bury water lines deep, and so with those excavations, you don't, it's just almost straight down, you know, you gotta, you gotta widen out a little bit to make those proper, um, installations. Uh, I do think it's a great project, I think many people in our community will benefit from this, and, and as was spoken at the public comments, sometimes there is compromise, and sometimes that compromise comes from the property owners. Um, and I sure hope we can come to resolve any indifferences we have. I did tell him that while we're happy to meet and discuss, I don't think we have been given any direction to change the basic scope of the job, which is sidewalks, streetlights, trail, the green space that I have heard come from the dais, and how we want to beautify this community. The streetlights, those are the basic elements of the job that I think are the core of what we're doing and reinvesting in Douglas. And so I advise that, I don't think those elements are changing. We're happy to meet and talk, but I, I don't want to mislead anybody to think our discussions are gonna leave us with a completely different project than what they've seen.
Well, it leads right to Lee McKeegan Park.
Lee McKeegan, you've got a lot of-
People do walk this area a lot.
You got commercial corridors and connection throughout the community, and I, I've seen our surveys come through parks and rec-
They don't have room for bikes on Douglas.
No, there are no bike lanes on Douglas.
Not going to be bike lanes, we're not gonna be able to widen it, so.
Bike lanes were one of the things we considered, and rather than adding the width of pavement for bike lanes, we decided to keep it narrow, provide a shared-use path, and, and some of that is being spoken through surveys. You know, our, our Parks Department does a lot of surveys, and our trail system is wildly popular, uh, by all, all reusers, whether they're on a skateboard or bicycle.
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Councilmember, oh, wait, wait, Mr. Park, Council, Councilmember Hodges has a question.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
So, they kept saying 10-foot sidewalks, are, are they gonna be 10-foot?
So, our typical width of a, a shared-use path, multi-use path, trail, a lot of people refer to it different things, is, is 10-foot, and, you know, they ask, where are these?
Yeah.
You look along most roads, so Scruggs, Blackwell, Pryor, Longview, Ward Road, I could keep listing, and they're not all four-lane roads, some are three-lane roads, some are part-two lane roads, and, and Douglas is a, it's a major roadway, but it doesn't need to be more than two lanes, we already concluded that, so, um, you know, it, it's a critical piece of our infrastructure, is Douglas and connecting downtown.
Where at on Blackwell, is it 10-foot?
Along the east side of Blackwell, uh, when you get south of Chitman, and actually, I, there may be a trail north along Blackwell Parkway, north of Chitman as well.
Okay, I was just trying to drive by and see it, but, okay, thank you, I was just curious if that was true or not.
You know, I think about those, I mean, it is really wide, but at the same time, if you don't have a place to ride your bike, or even if, even if you're walking with kids, yeah, with kids and strollers and stuff, I mean, I've, I've done enough walking on Blackwell, um, riding a bike, and it's, I, I wouldn't ride on Blackwell. Would you, Joe Snook, would you ride on Blackwell itself, or would you get on the path?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're a biker, you're a bicyclist. So, okay. Alright, well, um, I think we are at staff roundtable, is that where we are? Yes, staff roundtable.
Yeah, just a couple items, Mayor, staying in that, um, the public safety space with the mirrors, um, we, of course, provided an opportunity for all of you to check out our new boats that are, uh, we have two new boats in, in our fire department fleet, uh, that we have at our, as a resource now. Uh, we also, uh, shared that with the public through, uh, downtown days, with the fire having their, uh, the firehouse there, uh, open, so, uh, just wanted to create awareness in the community that those are in place and, and operational now. Um, we've, so that's a public safety sales tax-funded initiative. So, the public probably doesn't see the boats out much, but we have them, we have them, uh, to deploy when, when necessary. Uh, we've been through downtown days, we had the, uh, the No Kings event, uh, last weekend, and, and other public safety equipment that we have deployed for those mass gatherings of people, uh, through public safety sales tax as well, through this mobile command center, uh, you know, uh, cameras that we can deploy, uh, things of that nature. So, just wanted to highlight that we are putting, you know, those resources to work, uh, on behalf of the community for, for safety, so, uh, just wanted to make those points. Thanks, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Well, with that, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Shields to read this into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to section 610219 of the revised statutes, the state of Missouri, pertaining to preparation, including any discussion of work product on behalf of a public governmental body or its representatives, or negotiations with employee groups, I move to enter closed session.
Thank you, I have a motion to go into closed session by Councilmember Shields. And I have a second by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Councilmember Rader?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Berth.
Aye. Everybody have a good night. Everybody have a good night.